Uh good evening everybody, uh we are in our work session.
Sorry.
Oh is that from you?
Yes.
Of Tuesday, November fourteenth, uh can I please have a motion to open the work session?
So Luke second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, well we are going to start off with a discussion as many of you know, we uh hired Pace Land Use Center and Nexus to do um public engagement sessions for uh Town on Land and the Chappaqua Hamlet. And um we are going to have a discussion and a little bit of presentation as to what's been going on with that.
Right, good evening.
Sabrina, take it away.
Sure, um so tonight um I'm here to kinda get some uh direction from the board uh regarding the visioning, the branding, the schedule. Um I provided in front of you each something that I'm gonna share on the screen, so don't go flipping through it now but you have it, um and you also have a note card. If you flip over the note card, you have um a preferred option. And then I'm gonna go through the different branding options that I'll show you tonight, and then if you change your mind, you can change your option. And so this is about the brand that is gonna be associated on the web, in all sorts of media, in posters, uh used on multimedia platforms that will be representative of the visioning for the ch- town-owned lands in the Chappaqua Hamlet at the train station. Okay?
It's good, cuz this has been a long time since our last meeting with them, so.
So the intention tonight is for me to um to get your initial feedback and to give some direction so that in December, the consultant team can come in and present to you the final versions of the website and the media package. Okay? So we're gonna start with the mission. It's on the big screen, you also have it in front of you. Empowering the Newcastle community through inclusive collaboration to shape Chappaqua's town-owned land, fostering vibrancy and implementing resident-driven priorities. So think about that, you don't, you know, you can take some time to read it, absorb it, kind of give me some feedback if you feel it's necessary.
So my feedback would just be, I like the fostering vibrancy, but if the point of this is to have just collaboration as to what their priorities are, if the entire town said, "We don't want vibrancy, we're happy with the way it is," I don't wanna mandate that it fosters vibrancy. I mean, that's what we would like, I think, to see, but if that means putting up a hundred apartment buildings to add vibrancy, that's not what people want. So I have a problem with that. I would rather just have an inclusive collaboration to shape Chappaqua's town-owned land and implement resident-driven priorities, and let us figure out what those priorities are before dictating what they are.
What about if we reference the comprehensive plan in the mission?
Right, uh you know, I was going to say, isn't that part of the comp plan?
My only concern with that is how many more people have moved since we finished the comp plan, right? So maybe what came out of the comp plan might be different. The feedback might be different, depending on like what residents we engage. That's my only concern in referencing the comp plan. I don't know if like referencing the comp plan in the mission makes sense.
But I wouldn't want to, if we hear one thing here and it is completely misaligned with the comprehensive plan, I'm not sure I'd wanna go forward without revisiting the comprehensive plan either.
Totally agree, I just don't know that putting the comp. Yeah, I just don't know if mentioning the comp plan is necessary in the mission. This is your mission statement. It doesn't have to reference the comp plan or include a comp plan statement, goal, identity. This is what you are hoping to gain from this visioning process, right? And from what I'm hearing, the last part, implementing resident-driven priorities, that's right on the money. Oh yeah.
Yes.
Okay, how many of you want to reword or remove fostering vibrancy? I'm okay with that.
I I would leave it because to a certain extent, we can't just not say what we would like to see as well. I mean, this is something that we're presenting to the community.
Well, let me ask, let me ask a question.
Those were the buzzwords around the form-based code and everyone said there could only be vibrancy, hang on, if all those apartments are there. So that's what's troubling me about that.
Well, from a, from a I have a question in the same vein. What, uh from a practice point, vibrancy is not a hundred ap- apartments, right? Vibrancy can be lots of flowers and trees and people on the street. So that's what I'm gonna ask, let's, let's say that the overwhelming res- majority of responses from the community are that people want a bigger community center. Is that vibrancy? That fostering vibrancy?
Absolutely.
If we don't do anything other than that?
Absolutely. Sure, it's it's bringing people to to town, so that, that's what that is. I I ju- I'm just afraid we're getting caught up on something that, you know, depending on.
So do you guys wanna?
People drive to community center, take a class and drive home, that's actually not fostering vibrancy, it's only fostering traffic.
Well, what's fostering vibrancy is a sense of people getting together. So that's just an example of what could happen with a, with an effective community center. I mean, I think we're getting caught up on
Yeah, don't get, cuz this is a mission statement, it's very general. Alright, let's go, let's go through, we'll think on it, alright, think on it, okay?
That's why I actually don't think it's general, that's the problem. That's why I thought taking it out makes it more general. If residents want vibrancy, then that's their priority. If they say, "We want a sleepy town," then
Let's, let's pin it, okay? We can come back and visit it after, let's look at everything else that's here, and then we can revisit.
Okay.
Okay. This is very hard to read on the screen, it's the core narrative and communication, just talking about community vision, the program, what is it? Our mission, our goals, how you can get involved, together we shape the future. This is just core content that will be utilized in the media information to engage the community. It's too much to ask you to read this right now and provide feedback. But I would like to a- ask each of you to read it and provide your comments on it, if you have comments, cuz this is really a guiding document for the consultant team to put finalized um media together, okay? But there's not enough time for you to look at the screen right now and to kinda talk about it. But if you each mark it up for me by next Wednesday, I can coalesce all of your comments, your thoughts, and share them with everybody and get them to the consulting team. Okay? And again, the consultant team, they excel, this is what they do as a profession, right? So your comments will help them and be helpful to them, but I don't know that they're, they're, unless you're adamant about removing something or a statement, please be clear in your comments, okay? But they are the experts in this arena. Alright, we're gonna move on to the fun stuff. Ready? Wrong one. Okay, here they are. Here are the different brands that the applicant has, or that the consultant has put together for us.
You spent a lot of time on these?
I'm sorry?
They spent a lot of time on this?
I can't answer that question, I'm just representing the information. Um you have um their number differently, you can describe them, use their numbers. Choose the option that you like right off the bat without understanding how it operates.
I hate them all. Honestly, I could've done this on Canva in like five minutes.
One page, just this one page, not
Just the one page, yes. Take a look at it and identify which one you like. Do, do I have to write this on here? Yep, write it on your card.
I don't like any of them, they're terrible, all of them.
I think the colors could be different.
Well, well let's, the, the Very redundant. I would've liked a little bit more variety. None of them really pop.
Okay, but we can do the exercise for now, but we, that doesn't mean that we can't end up with something different.
Yeah, I hope. Well, well listen, he- here's the thing. Let's run through the exercise, let's hear about how they will function, and then we can have general comments as to how you may want different direction.
Well, but before we even go there, the big thing we told them is that we're not envisioning Newcastle. It's not the whole town, this is not a comprehensive plan. We're looking at the town-owned land in the Chappaqua Hamlet. We're not looking at Millwood right now, we're not looking at the west end, we're not looking at the east end. It's the Chappaqua Hamlet, so again, we had a problem with Envision Newcastle two months ago. I don't know what they've been doing, other than cashing our check.
We did have that conversation.
We had that conversation, it was very, very clear.
Is there gonna be thinking shared behind these?
Why are they not here? Like, I'd like to hear their answer to that question. Because to me, this is ridiculous, and we've been waiting for months. They're very far behind, I don't, this should not, I could've done this in three seconds and it's still wrong. To me, this is kind of embarrassing.
Alright, so if you guys don't wanna proceed on this, I can, if you don't wanna choose, I can move, go through the next slides that talk about what the brands, kinda how they will function, if you will, the explanation for them. So can I?
Go ahead.
Where will, where will I see this logo? Where, where are we anticipating? Let's just say for argument's sake, because
Well, is that what you're gonna talk?
Yeah. How I'm looking at it, it looks like the printer ran out of ink. Well, there's supposed to be motion behind them, so let's go to this slide, look up on the board, on the screen. This branding direction, the Envision Newcastle, whether you go the blue or the green, is intended, the direction leans on the future. We see marketing material bright with keywords and similar look to the new here. Okay, so whether it says Envision Newcastle or Town Land, the intention is that the general layout of the brand will look like this. Examples of textured colors with light. And so again, the, the, the placement of the brand is on all marketing material, on all social media that is developed in regards to this process.
Can we get them on the phone?
They're, they're not available tonight.
So, but it has to look good not just on the screen with light, but it has to look good on paper. Correct.
It does, it looks like the ink ran out.
It does.
I agree. And the colors are very washed out.
Okay.
It, it does, it looks like the printer ran out of ink, and it's not Newcastle. It's, it's the Chappaqua Hamlet. We're not looking at Town Old, we're not looking at Gedney Park, we're not looking at Town Old Land, anywhere else, other than the Hamlet.
But it is the town doing the vision.
We're asking the town to do the visioning, but Envision Newcastle is envision what Newcastle will look like.
Right, and they're saying
Not Newcastle do the envisioning.
On the bottom of every page, it does say regarding the use of town-owned land surrounding the Chappaqua train station, so I'm wondering if
The logo.
Right, so I'm wondering if the logo should reflect that. Okay, let, let me go through all of these, and then we'll put together a list of comments that you have, okay?
Yeah, I think.
Okay. So this branding direction with the inscript, the Envision, the Newcastle leans on the same color aspects as the previous one, but the script is to add a level of personal touch, it meant, meant to soften and create a more approachable message. And they have examples of textured colors with light, and then script throughout branding can be animated as if being signed or being in the moment. So imagine that that Envision is an active media component.
Not on paper, it's not.
I get, is, is the expectation that most of, I, I would like to ask them, maybe Most of your materials are going to be online. I guess that's the, the expectation. The expectation, it will be digital, the presentations will be digital. Right.
But I'm also thinking we'll have big signs at the triangle.
Yeah, correct. Signs at the triangle on the message board.
Right.
Electronic message board, so you know, you all are familiar with the way you receive information. How are you receiving most of your information today? Social media, social media.
That's us, but not everybody.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's going out to the public.
But that's why it is a multi-tiered platform.
There's a lot of people who aren't on, you know, Facebook, don't even know how to use computers.
Okay, I'm gonna move on to the next set.
Okay.
So the next set, um
I'm missing that one.
You're missing that one?
Yeah.
I am too.
But it's on the, it's on the screen, so we, we can see it. It's okay.
It's fine.
You don't need a piece of paper, it's okay.
Yeah.
You can, we can see it.
So this one um depicts creativity of the community. The re- this represents the narrative to fill in their story, to color and shade together. They can create something with layers and interest. The branding will show animation of words being colored in, sketched, and created. So this is a snapshot of a very mobile logo, brand, that will color and shade as you go along.
Maybe they can add a crayon if it's on paper.
Again, this is, to me, very comprehensive plan-driven. Fill in our future, it's, that, this to me reads comprehensive plan, not invi- not visioning for our town-owned lands in a very distinct area.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. It feels like we're asking people to weigh in on something much bigger than what the, the, their, the actual task is. The actual task is, is very specific.
But you're asking the entire town to weigh in on the task. So I would, I actually disagree with you as far as envisioning Newcastle. Because if it's only Chappaqua, and you're, you're only targeting Chappaqua, and it's Chappaqua train station, then I don't know how you include people who live in other areas of town.
We're asking all of Newcastle
Yes.
to say what you want to do in the Chappaqua, in Town on Land, in the Chappaqua Hamlet. But we're not envisioning Newcastle, we're envisioning the town-owned land in the Chappaqua Hamlet.
And, and so, so just thinking about
Seeing the logo, it doesn't.
Well, well, thinking about, if you were to put a train or something reflective of the train station as a component of the logo, right? I mean, cuz you can, you can't say, y- you know, the town of Newcastle train station envisioned, like you know what I'm saying, you, you can't, it's difficult in my mind to shape a logo around the train station and then have somebody who doesn't ever use the train station but may come downtown for a summer concert to weigh in and to think that they belong in this conversation. So it's marrying that. And the comments that you're giving me, I will provide back to the consultant team. I'm sure that they, they're more equipped from a marketing perspective to balance that. You know, and I don't know if it's as easy as, as rewording or incorporating, you know, logo or something that's more applicable to the train station lands, like, I don't know. Listen, I, I understand it's hard, I hear, you know, what Lisa's saying, I hear what Jill is saying. We're, we want all of Newcastle to provide feedback, for sure. That is, we've, everybody has said many times, that's the priority, is making sure the entire community feels like they were given ample opportunity to weigh in on this. So I understand that that is a tall order. And you have to marry that with the fact that we're talking about one very specific thing, and it's important that residents, through, through the outreach, through the presentations, understand we're not asking about their feedback on what we need to do throughout Newcastle, but what we can do on this very specific piece of land. I'll be honest, though, I, I'm not picking up either of those things from this. I think this is a mess on, on all of it.
But you know what, I, just conceptually, whether we use any of these logos or not, I'm just thinking about the concept of Newcastle versus Chappaqua, and um I do think that if we use the concept of Newcastle, what it means is that we're envisioning a part of Newcastle that can have an impact on everyone in the entire town, even though it's just the train station. You know, now how to communicate that effectively is another matter.
Yeah.
But I, I don't think that we want to limit the messaging to the train station. I don't know if that's inspiring enough to motivate people. And let, and let's say we have a
But that is what we're talking about though.
Yeah.
But not the train station, it's Town on Land, Chappaqua Hamlet.
No, I agree with what you're saying, I just don't know how we
Center that brings in kids, that brings in adults, it's going to have an impact on all of Newcastle, we hope.
Yeah.
And we hope that that engages everyone.
Successful project.
So the question is how to brand this to convey that.
Yeah.
So if I had to choose any of these, I think it looks like a kindergartner did it, but the one on the top left that says the town of Newcastle envisioned, that to me makes more sense, cuz now you're asking the town of Newcastle to envision something?
Three A, that was my choice.
We all like that one too.
That's
Oh, really?
Because you're asking the town of Newcastle to envision something instead of telling people to envision Newcastle.
And that fill in our future, I kinda like that.
The switch, but m- maybe instead of fill in our future even, you can say envision the Chappaqua Hamlet, or envision whatever, you can change that.
Yeah, we gotta work it.
But that to me, that distinction between envision Newcastle and the town of Newcastle envisioned is a, is actually a big distinction.
So maybe they can take this feedback and come up with, with something.
It's, it's really important that they, that, this is something that grabs somebody so that they want to know what we're looking for, not try to have the logo explain the project. Um so I, I mean, I liked three A as well.
Yeah, three A.
Well, it, it has to explain it's some, some
Like, don't love.
Yeah, like, don't love, what is that, three A?
Three A.
Yep.
Yeah, that's the only one I could even remotely get behind.
And I'm not even, I'm not married to fill in your, our future, but I, what I liked about that one was also that there was a little slogan underneath it. And I like "our future."
I liked envisioned being the biggest thing that grabs you versus the new.
Same.
Yeah.
Same.
And I just like that it's being used as kind of a verb there. You're asking people to envision instead of envisioning Newcastle. You're asking Newcastle to envision instead of, you know what I mean? And that, the
It's active.
It's more active.
I, I like that, but I like, I like it to be, to be, I'd like it to be different. I don't really like the lettering, it just needs to be
I think it needs to be more modern and vibrant and engaging, yeah. This looks like it, it should be an elementary spirit.
Multicolor thing, but um
It can be multicolor, you know, the, the colors.
The font is the problem.
Yeah, the font is
The font is the problem, it looks like it, it looks juvenile.
The town of Newcastle fill in our future, or is it the font of
The envisioned.
Okay.
It just looks juvenile.
I, I kinda like the sense of fun it conveys. I mean, this should be a fun process.
It will be, it should be.
Yeah, I, so that's, I mean, I know, I'm
I, I guess what they're trying to convey is that it's something unfinished and that you should want to get a crayon and color.
Well, I like that idea, that it can be colored in, like, I think that's kind of cool.
Well, and, and it, on paper, you can choose whether it's all colored in or partially colored in, if it's rainbow colors or one color. When it's online or in the media, it's going to be scratching back and forth, filling in, unfilling, filling in, unfilling, like, that's the intention behind this snapshot of the brand.
Yeah, I'd love to see different fonts.
Same.
With, you know, maybe more sophisticated letters, maybe something long and sleek, you know, um
Yeah, we like the idea of it maybe filling it in, but it should look like adults are doing that.
And maybe it could be, maybe it could be filled in.
Outlining on there.
Maybe it could be filled in with different colors. I'm not so sure about the idea of a single color like that.
The only problem is, I hear what you're saying, I'm worried that you'll focus more on the colors than what it's saying.
Possibly.
If you think, you know, town of Newcastle, Castle envisioned, the next series of words could be land at Chappaqua train station. Like, you can have a whole series of really getting at some of the things that you think will help direct what this is all about. Again, if this is active.
Yes, and then, that's better.
You'd have the word envision be what people see. And then you can have all, all the options underneath it. Maybe those options could be interactive, and the word envision is there, you know, wi- within what we're trying, what we're looking at.
Which I think is great if you're gonna put it on social media and, and where it's interactive, but if it's just a logo, you obviously can't do that, so.
That would be different, that would maybe be the same word, envision, with everything written down on a piece of paper. I'm, I'm sure there's a way, there's a way
Let them tinker with it, and tinker with fill in our future, which we like, but maybe the fill in our future could, could actually ask them what, could specify what we're asking them to envision.
Play with it a little bit.
Yeah, I mean, maybe
Fill in the future of the Chappaqua Hamlet, or fill in whatever it is.
Town-owned land.
Town-owned land.
Yeah, yeah, like, yeah, that is all part of
Town-owned land, but
That would feel weird, I don't know.
But that type of dialogue and feedback is what they're looking for.
Okay.
Okay?
I mean, I, I'm thinking that the logo is just envision. It's simple, it's clean, and obviously it's Newcastle, we could say there. I think there are too many words. I think having a one-word thing, it feels more modern. And um, you know, we could put Newcastle where it is, but I, I just, I just want the word envision.
See, one that's just envision, maybe one that's the town of Newcastle envisioned, different fonts, like
Right, I mean, it would say, it would have to say town of Newcastle.
But a little bit more
But what I'm saying is that envision should be what people see.
Yeah.
And that's it.
Okay.
I'm not gonna, I'm gonna disagree, I think there needs to be more than just I, I feel like for a logo, it's gonna have more than just the word.
It, it will, it will, in smaller letters, but, but that's, that's what we want people to focus on.
Different options, this is like a little
Something that works off of this is inspiration.
Yes, something that works off of three A, let them go back to the original.
That, I think, is for us to consider would be better.
And maybe they can do it in less than two months.
They're coming to see you on the fourteenth?
The twelfth.
Twelfth?
Twelfth.
Twelfth.
Yep.
So here's the schedule. Um, this is what they were looking at, um, you know, the whole branding direction decisions made tonight, this month.
Let me just interrupt you for a second, so um we're closer.
Yes.
But we don't have decisions made.
Correct.
I, I think that you're gonna need to go back to them. I know that they're not available on the fifth, but maybe we could be in a position where um they could get back to us on the fifth with, or the twenty eighth.
Or before.
You know, variations of three A.
Yeah.
So that we are prepared on the twelfth for a presentation of the full marketing.
Yeah.
Um information to the board.
Let them, you know, the last
See, that's the twelfth, so I knew she wasn't, I know she's not available on the fifth, but, but they can get back to us and just
I would say let them get us something so we can look at it again on the twenty eighth, even if we're not
Maybe the person, the marketing person who put this together can come in. Right, not the whole thing.
On the twenty eighth of November, two, that gives them two weeks.
I, I, I will go back to them with this, and I, you know, see what they get.
Well, I mean
I think it's really helpful, though, to have the board together brainstorming.
No, no, I understand.
So let them come back to us on the twenty eighth.
We will shoot for the twenty eighth.
Well, let them shoot, this has been months and months, like
And they're not available on the fifth, so I We hope that there was some initiative here. If I am asking for the media person to come and not the rest of the team, then they might be able, she may be able to come on the fifth, or she may be able to come on the twenty eighth.
Why the other people should be here?
I don't know.
Is, is there something we would be missing if they're not?
I don't know.
Not for the logo.
I, I don't know, again, I think that that's a, that's a question for them.
But what I want, I don't know if them
They'll feel comfortable doing that.
But Sabrina, I don't wanna have this conversation again on the twenty eighth. Like, I'd like to have new things to look at.
I understand. Yeah.
So that we can have this same discussion with new ideas so that we can hopefully make a decision on the twenty eighth, and if we need to then tinker with it, at least it gives us till the, the fifth, then we can make the decision even the fifth, so that by the twelfth, they can present us with a full set of marketing materials.
Okay, so understandable where we are today and what we're not accomplishing. We're gonna try and fit something in in the next two weeks um to, to get us back on track for the twelfth, where they'll present to you the entire marketing
Yep.
platform. Um they're looking at launching this website in January, uh press, social media, all of that. Um continuing that social media and marketing campaign through February. In March, start doing the stakeholder pop-ups, um you know, the senior center, the chamber of commerce, um the Saint Patrick's Community Center pop-up, um different events that occur, doing pop-ups at those events. And then in April, doing a train station pop-up, a stakeholder pop-up with all of the visioning sessions occurring in early May. Okay, so that's the Okay, so that's the draft schedule right now, this is the schedule where they'll be populating our media presence with all of these dates and the schedules.
And and do all those dates represent their full commitment for
Yes.
the number of sessions, so we couldn't have more unless we.
It's for more.
Oh, we can have more, twelve weeks.
It's gonna be twelve weeks, now it's like twelve months.
We could play around with this, as, you know, as ev- events come and go and they change.
Correct.
This is based on what we know to be scheduled. So we might find better opportunities, okay.
Do you know what five eighteen, the multicultural pop-up refers to?
There is probably an event that we provided to them.
In town?
It's the rec center.
It's the rec centers?
Yeah, Ike plans a.
Okay.
Yeah, we shared with them, we shared with them all of recreation's events for the year.
Oh, got it.
So we're able to get back onto it.
Yep.
Okay.
I just wanna put on the record again that when we approved this company, they said they could do this whole process in six to twelve weeks, and now it's twelve months. So I still have a real issue with that and think, and and very troubled by the fact that they did that. I'm very unhappy with them.
Okay, that's all I have to present to you today. Did you need us to do? I think I pretty much.
No, I think Sabrina knows.
I I I pretty much understand three A and variations on that.
I think you need the cards now.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you don't need this back.
It would be nice if we were all.
Yeah, maybe I'll say.
Yeah, I know, I know.
We should all.
I know, I don't know if she's in a position to be able to, you know, just zoom in to
Yep.
to brainstorm with us, it's just, it's just helpful, I mean, I'm sorry Jeremy's not here, but having Jeremy here and then not having Ally here, I don't wanna.
We, maybe if we all get it.
Yeah, okay.
But it's okay, he didn't miss too much.
Yep.
Okay.
Um, he didn't miss too much right from now.
Yeah. Yeah, no, no, oh, oh, good, just, you know, the the dynamic is helpful.
I I think, I, my sense is that
That he wouldn't be that helpful.
that Jeremy would defer to us on this, just my sense.
Okay, fair enough, fair enough. All right, um, can I recommend that the, can I ask, um, the town board, can we just take a, um, a five-minute recess?
Oh, okay, now we're supposed to, in between?
Sure, sure.
Yeah.
Yep. Right, right now.
Okay.
Um.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, can I have a motion to have a five-minute recess?
Uh, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're gonna just take a recess, we'll be right back. Okay, we're back, thank you for bearing with us. Uh, we are now gonna continue our work session with a discussion of a draft local law regarding chapter sixty-five of filming, this is a continuation of our um, discussion last week, we, uh, you know, had had some comments to some proposed legislation, so we are now going to go over that now. Let's take it away, Lino.
Thank you, Madam Supervisor, uh, so, last week you all had some comments with respect to the draft local law that my office prepared regarding filming. And what we're doing with respect to this local law, we're really just modifying, uh, some of the definitions, kind of bringing this provision of the code kind of up to date, particularly with streaming services, and now that you have, uh, there was a time where it was just major motion pictures, but now you have streaming services like Netflix, uh, Paramount Plus, to name a host of others that come into the town and request film permits, so what this legislation seeks to clarify is to add that to the definition. It also changes some of the language with respect to, you know, what what is a commercial production with respect to film, so we modified that definition. We took out a couple of definitions to make it, I mean, there was some question as to whether these things were ambiguous in terms of some of the definitions, so we we deleted some of those provisions that we thought were at issue. We also added provisions with respect to the fines, we increased the cost of fines per violation. Also gave the town the option to lien property for any unpaid fines, uh, with respect to any permits. Uh, and that's kind of the high level of what we did, but the biggest, the two biggest changes really are the streaming services and changing the definition of what it means to constitute a a commercial production.
Hmm.
So those are the changes, and there were some comments and some edits, uh, that we, that were given to us last week, and we put them in the red line in the statute you have here, so if it's acceptable, the next step would be to schedule a public hearing as whatever your your next date is.
Uh, the twenty eighth, I think is what we're, we're looking at, November twenty eighth.
Twenty eighth.
Um, any thoughts or comments on this?
No, reflects.
No, I think you reflected our, uh, discussion, our prior discussion, so, pretty straightforward.
Okay.
Yeah.
You did.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with it.
You did. All right, great, so, um, thank you very much, uh, in our resolutions, we will be setting that public hearing, uh, when, when we get to our public meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, thank you for doing that.
There's actually just one other issue for work session, um, that I want you to talk to the board about. Um, as the board is aware, uh, we're in the midst of replacing the playground equipment at Millwood, uh, Park. And, uh, when we removed the playground equipment, they had a little bit of a kerfuffle, a, a little bit of a communication error, and, uh, an old swing set that was supposed to stay was, uh, mistakenly removed. Uh, it could not be resurrected, so we have to, uh, order a new swing set. Which is fine, because when the gorgeous new, uh, playground equipment was installed, that old swing set was really gonna look old, and people would have asked us,
Yes.
what about the swing set, so, we were proactive, and so, happened to.
Yes, so the good news is they will be getting, Millwood Park will be getting a new swing set, the bad news is it's gonna take a little while, but.
Well, it's cold, it'll be ready, when, when do we think it will be ready to?
It's cold.
It it'll be ready by summer, spring, for certain.
Great, it's time for softball and baseball.
Um, and of course, there there is an additional seven thousand dollars that we hadn't anticipated, so.
Exactly.
Sorry about that, but the, when baseball season starts and the kids are there on the playground, they will thank you, everybody, very much for this.
Yes.
Okay.
So, so sorry about that.
Um, the other thing that's not on work session, I meant to email you about, we got, um, an email asking for the use of town property for, um, testing to be donors for kiddies. Remember I sent that to everybody, to use the train station, they wanted to do a drive up.
Well, we, um, yeah, but something that, yeah, we just need to add.
Yeah, it's, I have that, so I'm reviewing that.
Okay, you're reviewing that, okay, so you'll get back to s- our next meeting?
Okay.
Correct.
Okay, perfect, I know they're also looking at utilizing school property, I let them know that they, we are not the board to discuss that, but, um, you know, I think they wanted to see what their options were either way. Okay, perfect, thank you. Okay, anything else for work session?
I don't think so.
All right, well, in that case, can I please have a motion to adjourn, um, the town work session and open the town board meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Yep.
Perfect, yes.
Madam Supervisor, you noticed it says seven forty-five, so you may have to.
Oh, we need to wait a little bit.
You can wait, yeah, so you may wanna just take a breather.
All right, well, we are going to then take, do we need to have a motion to go and to adjourn?
No, you just, you you adjourned your work session, so just come back at seven forty-five and open the meeting.
Yes, okay. All right, so.
So, I amend the motion to.
To start the meeting at seven forty-five, wow, we're never ahead of schedule.
Second.
There you go.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we are going to just have an adjournment to seven forty-five, hang tight.
Hang tight until seven forty-five.
Good evening, everyone, welcome to our town board meeting of Tuesday, November fourteenth, we already had a motion to open the meeting, uh, and then a short adjournment, because we were ahead of schedule, which never happens. So, uh, a lot of people here, I kinda wanna milk it, feels good. Um, all right, I wanna start, uh, just with, do you have any announcements?
No, just a short administrative report.
Okay, so I just wanted to start, um, by wishing everyone in advance a happy Thanksgiving. Uh, we don't have a meeting next week because it's Thanksgiving week, so I'd like to wish everybody a very joyful and peaceful and happy Thanksgiving with loved ones. Um, why don't you do your administrative report and then I'll do this.
Okay, um, as the board is aware, a couple of weeks ago, the board approved, um, a a decision to leave Code Red and to, um, instead engage the firm of Civic Ready. Um, we will be launching our Newcastle e-alert system, uh, the first week in December. Uh, residents are going to, uh, see the rollout, uh, tomorrow in the e-newsletter. You're gonna see these snazzy little stay informed, stay safe. So what that means is that if you are currently receiving alerts or you'd like to continue receiving alerts from the town of Newcastle for, um, road closures, uh, snow emergencies, for, uh, refuse pickups and delays due to inclement weather. Um, tax reminders, things of that nature that you're currently getting Code Red alerts for, you must sign up instead for Newcastle e-alerts. Um, there'll be a little, uh, scanning section that will bring right you right to it, it's on our website, and there'll be information sent around. But, um, you know, we apologize, we appreciate the fact that there is, that it is a hassle to have to switch from one group to another, but we've had some, um, problems and the Code Red system is not as up to date um, as we wished it was and doesn't, doesn't give us the ability to communicate the way it had years ago. Um, so we're very excited to launch this new system, I think the public is gonna be very impressed with its capabilities, and, uh, all you have to do is sign up.
Jill, when will Code Red be rolled out?
Code Red is actually going to be phased out, our contract expires, um, December sixteenth, we will not be using it after December one. Um, but we will be using it to just alert people that they have to sign up for the new system, and we will give them link in order to be able to do that.
Okay, thanks.
And it will be again in the town newsletter, we'll make sure everyone knows about it, so please, please sign up. Um, all right, back to supervisor's report, so, um, in our community corner today, I wanted to wish a happy sixth birthday to Gillian Martino. We hope you're having a great day, and also a big congratulations to the Haras Gruia High School varsity girls volleyball team for their twenty twenty-three section one class double A championship win. I really love supporting our kids here in town. Um, so I did just wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, one thing I wanna remind everyone also, I was in the mall today very quickly, and there's already Christmas music, so I want to remind everyone about shopping local and supporting our merchants. No need to shop at Amazon, go to our local merchants, um, in Chappaqua and Millwood, and really support them, they do a lot for us, so let's show our love for them. All right, with that being said, we are going to move to public comment new business. So there are a lot of you here today, I'm assuming, who want to speak, um.
Uh, Madam Supervisor, I just wanted to take the moment, I'm sorry if it's, uh, to interrupt you.
Sure.
But since I am, usually I'm in person, I'm there, could you just remind everybody, please, I need their, some, to speak their name clearly and their address for the record? It's harder to take the minutes since I'm not there in person, but I, I need to, to not be in person.
I got you, Christina, we're on top of it.
Thank you.
So, what I was gonna say, is there a lot of you who need to speak today, um, we're gonna ask you to come up, again, state your name, your address, and whether you are a Newcastle resident, please, um, we need that, as Christina so eloquently said, for our minutes. Um, it's not a public hearing, so we don't have a sign-up sheet, so just be respectful of each other. Um, again, we also did away, uh, when I first joined the board ten years ago with a timer. So we do not time anyone's comments, however, we ask you to be cognizant of the time and the number of people here, if you have something you would like to say in public comment, please just try to keep it as brief as possible. Um, all right, so is there any public comment or new business, just raise your hand and we'll kinda call you up. No one, oh, Jen, come on up. Hi, state your name, address, and whether you're a Newcastle resident.
Uh, this is, I'm Jennifer Klein, um, I'm a Newcastle resident and councilperson-elect, um, and I live at one Brevort Road. Um, this is regarding the flag flying. This topic of the Israeli flag flying at our town hall has really made me think and has forced me to ponder how we all feel about it, since we are a town of neighbors. On the one hand, it is very reassuring to me as a Jewish person that my town shows support for the existence and survival of the Jewish state, and by flying the flag indicates that at this moment we stand united against the horrific attack on Israel and the Jewish people. I also am keenly aware that some of my neighbors of Muslim faith or descent and perhaps other backgrounds as well take issue with the flag flying, and some even feel distressed by seeing it there and ask for the Palestinian flag to also fly. In my time living in Newcastle and prior, I've been quite committed to supporting diversity and committing through my work and activities to underserved individuals and those who feel voiceless and persecuted from a variety of backgrounds, from all of the protected classes in our nation. I asked tonight to have my neighbors give space and consideration for people of my own background. I don't usually ask this, I'm usually defending someone else, but tonight, I guess it's my demographic under attack. It is coincidental, but not insignificant, that today was the march in DC against antisemitism. I took a break at work today to hear speakers including Chuck Schumer, Hakeem Jeffries, Mike Johnson, and Joni Ernst, four leaders in Congress with starkly different views on practically every single issue under the sun. But on this one, there is no daylight. They all came together to voice their commitment to protecting Jewish people and the right to a homeland while simultaneously caring for Palestinian people and the rights of all to live in peace. They all seem to grasp the basic human right to not be beheaded, burned, raped, murdered while relatives look on. And also to not be deprived of fuel for hospitals or a humanitarian path away from danger, to not be used as human shields. They all four, especially, called for the release of the hostages. There are nine American citizens plus one legal resident of the US still held today. All four politicians spoke with one voice and without hesitation, very unusual. Hakeem was particularly impactful when he outlined how over millennia, the Jewish people have been violently expelled from so many empires and nations and lands, and how critical it is that they, we, have a home somewhere on the planet, that place is Israel. All of the Jews in this town are just one, maybe two generations from expulsion, pogroms, persecution. We are not from here, our ancestors fled, all of them, whether in the late eighteen hundreds or during the time of World War Two, they fled. My son was in Israel on October seventh. Not many in our town can say that, my child was there. I was frightened for his safety, and I know that some concerned about the flag flying know that he was there and wished my son's safety. I really do understand that some of my neighbors feel afraid to speak, to voice their commitment to Palestinian lives and their sadness for what is happening there right now. I am also horrified to see those lives destroyed. And I am most moved by the ways that Jews and Arabs and Jews and Palestinians in Israel are coming together with humanity and a longing for peace in certain areas of Israel, certain towns like Neve Shalom and Oasis of Peace, where they actually live together. What I wish for right now is for our town to come together. I wish those who are speaking out against the flag flying could consider being an ally to their Jewish neighbors. And I want to do the same for anyone who feels grieved by what is happening to Palestinian lives. I've honestly felt unsure about the flag, but I realize today and feel clear that it is a symbol of alliance from our town to the Jewish people, and a signal of support for Jews who are right now under attack. And I hope my friends in Newcastle from all demographics can see it as such and allow it to fly for now. I would love to say it should fly until the two hundred-plus hostages are released, but that may be just too long of a wait. For the purposes of our town, concern for the nine Americans plus one US resident should be paramount and top priority. Just for that alone, I feel we should fly the flag of the force that endeavors to find and free them. If one of those hostages was my son, I would absolutely expect the town to fly it until he arrived on my doorstep, thank you.
I'm glad your son is safe.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak? Come on up. If you could please state your name, address, and whether you're a Newcastle resident.
Sure, thank you, uh, my name is Harry Soloway, I'm, my address is one forty-three Dogwood Road, and I live in Corlin Manor, uh, outside of Peekskill. Uh, I'm here because I'm a member of Jewish Voice for Peace in Westchester. Um, I am here because your actions, your statements, and the leadership in the past month have made this town so unsafe for Newcastle residents that they have sought us out for support. I have met with Palestinian, Muslim, Christian, and Jewish residents of Chappaqua. They feel vulnerable, unheard, and most importantly, unsafe in Newcastle. You have harmed them by taking such an unbalanced and biased stance in your unconditional support of Israel. You have failed to acknowledge the realities, the struggles, and humanity of these families. Instead of your professed values of acceptance. Instead of your professed values of acceptance, tolerance, and inclusion, your words and actions have sowed division, fear, and intimidation. You have community members that are deeply grieving. Friends, family, or relatives of Newcastle, of Newcastle residents have been killed or wounded in the past month, both Palestinian and Israeli. Rather than caring for and centering all of your residents, whatever their faith or background, you have taken a political position that marginalizes and dismisses many of your residents' pain. Your indifference also ignores the anguish of many Jewish residents that decry the Israeli government's longstanding policy of violence and collective punishment that perpetuate the cycle of death and destruction in Israel-Palestine. There are people of conscience that yearn for peace. Your position not only promotes Islamophobia, but antisemitism as well. And perhaps what is most alarming is that over and over again, residents tell us that they do not feel like they could speak their truth to you, they cannot share their grief for fear of recrimination. In fact, residents do not just fear speaking out or speaking up, they now fear merely being in town. You have created such a polarized, polarizing and hostile atmosphere in this town that residents have told us that they do not feel safe walking downtown, they do not feel safe socializing with their neighbors.
Sorry, let me interrupt you for one, one second. One thing that we do value in town is respect for everyone, even if we completely disagree with what they're saying. So I would ask that we listen to each other with respect, even if we completely don't agree with, with each other. Thank you.
People in the community fear that-
He does not live here, that's true, but we, we made an executive decision before that we're gonna allow everyone to speak, acknowledging the fact that he is not a Newcastle resident, and he is not one of our constituents.
Thank you. And I repeat, I was asked by community members-
I hope you're not reading all of those pages.
Yes. I, I just want to repeat, I was asked by community members to show up. They fear that if they take any-
I would have liked those community members to show up.
Excuse me?
I would have liked to have had those community members to show up. And maybe you can provide us with their names so we can make sure that they feel safe and respected and-
I absolutely will not provide you with their names because they do not feel safe or protected. And that's the purpose why I'm speaking, because they have asked me to speak in their support, because they're afraid to speak. They fear that if they, if they take any position other than-
Please stop talking, please. Thank you.
Thank you. They fear that if they take any position other than staunch support of Israel, they will be publicly denounced and accused of antisemitism. Worse still, parents are deeply anxious for their children as they walk into school each day, where they face hostility, discrimination, and harassment from their peers, simply because of who they are and what they believe. All of this is made possible by the rhetoric and political position of town officials. As leaders of this town, you set the tone. You lead by example. And your example has been one that cares only for the hearts of some, that validates only the pain of some. It is critical to embrace the feelings of all community members in this most tragic moment. It is time to truly support your entire community by expressing equal empathy for all the victims of this horrendous violence. Thank you.
Thank you. And I urge residents who have not seen statements coming out of this town board to make sure you read those where it actually does acknowledge the pain and suffering of innocent people on all sides of this. Are you taking public comments or- We are taking public comment. Raise your hand and we'll, we'll have you come up. Would you like to make a, come on up. We'd like to know your name, address, and whether or not you're a Newcastle resident.
Sure, I'm a resident of Newcastle. I have been one for 42 years. My name is Randa Saraborn. I think I've exchanged some emails with you.
Yes, you have.
And I just wanted to say that as a-
Read your address, please. We need it for the minutes.
One Button Hook Road, Chappaqua, New York.
Thank you.
As a resident of Chappaqua, it also strongly offends me to see the Israeli flag when there are so many innocent Palestinians being killed. So I'm a resident, and I'm truly concerned, and I've had kids in the school district who also feel, just as much as Jewish students feel antisemitism, Arab students in this community can also feel anti-Arab sentiments. There have been several instances at Greeley, which honestly, when the facts are gone through, just, you know, they, they translate into something different. And I think what I'm struggling with is how much this community seems to be very one-sided, one-siloed and one-sided. And I would like to see a little bit more impartiality, because I think it's just unfair. I think it's really unfair to those citizens of this community that feel like we're not being listened to when you guys are all town representatives for everyone in this town. So, and I feel very strongly about that, and I don't know if anything will come from it, but I really would like to see a little bit more when you talk about inclusivity and diversity and respect for everyone. I don't see that happening to the other side, and that's what I wanted to come here today and speak about.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Hi, my name is Lori Callit. I'm a Newcastle resident. I live at 558 Millwood Road in Mount Kisco. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight. I didn't even know I was gonna be here until a few hours ago, but I wanted to come. I love this community. We moved here about nine years ago. Actually, I know Randa. We played tennis yesterday with your daughter. We had a great time. I know everyone here is really going through a lot, and I get it, I understand it, I respect it. I love this community. We love the diversity, the inclusivity, everything that it stands for. I love the community, but I really have to say, where is the community? The community is in the United States of America, and that really is where my heart lies. My husband, who lives here, we have children who go to the school here. Every morning, he gets on that train right here at the Chappaqua train station. He goes into the city. His office is right by Grand Central Station. This Friday, Veterans Day, he was going home from, from work, coming home from work. There were protesters. I know what's going on is crazy, but for him to have to witness protesters, many of them that were surrounding the protesters had Palestinian flags on them, and they were chanting and cheering on as they were ripping down our American flag outside of Grand Central Station where my husband goes every day. I want to be inclusive and support everyone. I love Israel. I don't want innocent people being hurt in Palestine. But I can't feel comfortable thinking that there's gonna be a Palestinian flag held up in my town when my husband, coming home, back home to Chappaqua, witnessed what he witnessed on Veterans Day. When my grandparents fought for this country, I can't feel safe, and I don't know what kind of message that's sending to our children in our schools.
Would anyone else like to speak?
Hello. My name is Cecilia Lavin. I'm not a resident. I live in New Rochelle, 620 Pelham Road. I'm a Catholic sister and a member of Jewish Voice for Peace. And I'm here to speak. The words that I'm reading are on this paper. They're not written by me. They're written by members of your community who are afraid to come before you and say things.
Can I just interrupt for a second? Maybe, excuse me, maybe all of you, since you're, you're in the same organization and you're saying you're representing the same people, maybe you could all have one statement so that we don't need to- there are a lot of people here, I think, who want to speak. Is it very similar to what Mr. Salloway said?
It is similar, but it's only, we only have two statements to make.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you.
You just asked her to repeat her name. I couldn't catch it.
Cecilia Lavin, L-A-V-A-N.
Okay, thank you.
I have it written down. You got it? Cecilia Lavin, L-A-V-A-N. And she lives in New Rochelle, is not a resident.
Correct.
Thank you.
So I'm here because your actions have created such a divisive, polarized, and hostile climate in Newcastle that residents have sought us out to support them. That's Jewish Voice for Peace. We have spoken with Muslims, Palestinians, Christians, Jews, families, and students. Though they are diverse, they all share one thing in common: they feel unsafe and dismissed in this town. Your staunch stance in support of Israel despite the death of more than 11,000 Palestinian civilians is harmful and unethical. Aside from the biased rhetoric members of this town council have used, there are two specific actions taken by the council that have sown division, intimidation, isolation, and fear in your residents. The first is the decision to fly the flag of Israel outside of Town Hall. Though this is a questionable legality, it is more importantly a question of morality. The symbol of the Israeli flag to alienate, alienates members of the community who do not subscribe to the outsized response of the Israeli government to the events of October 7th. There is a large part of the Newcastle community that includes Palestinians, Arabs, Jews, Muslims, and others of conscience and integrity who are equally appalled by the violence of the attacks on Gaza as by the attacks by Hamas. In addition, there are residents who are deeply mourning the deaths of relatives and friends who have died at the hands of the Israeli armed forces. The sight of the Israeli flag flying over Town Hall causes these community members severe trauma, alienation, and estrangement from their community. In addition, the resulting polarization of the community causes fear and recrimination and harassment. Fear of recrimination and harassment. In fact, your clear political agenda contributes to the growing climate of hate, which includes antisemitism and Islamophobia. In the interest of the health and well-being of the community, please take the flag down. The second unfortunate action by the town council is its inability to support its own town's council on race, equity, and inclusion. Jewish Voice for Peace has read the first statement, the council's first statement. We see nothing antisemitic in it. The statement is clearly carefully constructed. In fact, JVP wishes the statement had done more to acknowledge the unjust and brutal killing of nearly 6,000 Palestinians by Israel at the time the statement was made. In other words, we wish the statement had done more to acknowledge the trauma of witnessing collective punishment, not less. Instead, you unanimously rejected their statement, a statement that did the careful work of holding as many Newcastle residents in its embrace as possible. You claim this was because you wanted them to be more, to do more to stand up against antisemitism. Because no one in your town feels safe enough to say this, we will. Your hostile rejection was not an act of concern for your Jewish neighbors. It was an act of strong-arming the Council on Race, Equity, and Inclusion into taking the same polarizing stance you have taken since October 7th. We recognize that they had no choice but to resign, for how can someone do the work of caring for the marginalized when they will be silenced or reprimanded if they do not agree with the majority? Your subsequent act of publicly denouncing the Council on Race, Equity, and Inclusion as antisemitic has set them up for doxing threats and-
I'm sorry, nobody said that they were antisemitic, and you will never find a statement or a word anywhere that said that. So I'm gonna take issue with that, and I ask you to please correct that.
Well, rejecting this statement- Excuse me for a moment. I just, I just feel compelled to add because I was the liaison to that committee, and I know those people. And I just want everyone to know that these people were not, are not antisemitic. We may, we may disagree, but it is not an occasion to start accusing people. It's an occasion to come together and try to gain more understanding. And, you know, I speak to you as well when I say it's not an occasion for accusations. So I just wanna, I just wanna say as a former liaison to the committee that the members of the community, of the committee are absolutely not antisemitic.
Nor did we ever say that.
Thank you.
She's just reading what somebody handed her, so.
I am. But, but it's your, it's your people who handed it.
Excuse me, our county attorney-
Can I just make a statement? Just, people are commenting, and these minutes are being transcribed, so if, if people speak, if the public, please just let that person speak. And please, no side conversations. It all should be addressed to the board. That's all, because again, minutes are being taken, so I appreciate-
There is not a timeline, as I said before, but we ask people to be cognizant of the time.
That Newcastle residents are forced to look for support and acknowledgement from groups like Jewish Voice for Peace. That the well-being and safety of your residents is superseded by your political agenda is both corrupt and immoral, and it has not gone unnoticed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before we take any more speakers, is there anyone here who has a public comment for something other than the flag? Because I'll let that person go first.
No.
Okay, no, all right. And then just, I wanted to just state one thing. Yes?
No, he has, he wants to speak.
I wanted to just state one thing because there was a statement, and I know we've gotten some emails about the legality of flying that flag. I just want to let everyone know that it is legal for us to do that. We have confirmed with town council. I got an email today from the governor's office who has confirmed that if this town board so chooses, we are allowed to fly any flag of any nation that we choose to fly. So it is one, as long as it's underneath the flag of our nation. So I just want to put that out there. If you need further clarification, our attorney is here to give that to you. But I can tell you that we have looked into it, and it is legal, so if you're going to come up here and tell us that it's not, you don't need to do so. All right, next.
How are you?
Seth Iskowitz. I am a Newcastle resident at 16 Red Oak Lane in Mount Kisco. Just want to start by saying over the last couple of weeks, what I have seen from the organization JVP is a lot of hate coming out of that that is dividing people and inciting violence, and they don't speak for the majority of the Jewish people. I'm standing here with a heavy heart as our community grapples with the aftermath of the October 7th events and the ongoing conflict in the Middle East. The decision to display the Israeli flag was a gesture of solidarity, expressing support for a nation that has faced continuous threats and attacks from the Hamas terrorist organization. However, I've learned that there are people here today who don't agree with that. And what I want to say is that while diversity of opinion is a cornerstone of any democratic society, it is crucial to recognize the sensitivity of the current situation, especially considering the deep emotional impact on our heavily Jewish population. The Israeli flag, not merely a symbol, it represents the resilience and struggle of a nation facing constant threats to its existence. Placing another flag next to it, especially that of a region directly involved in the conflict, may unintentionally convey a false equivalency, or worse, undermine the gravity of the threats Israel faces from terrorist organizations like Hamas. It is essential to acknowledge, it is essential to acknowledge the complexities of the situation in the Middle East, while civilians unfortunately involved in Gaza, as well as caught in the crossfire. However, we must be cautious not to conflict, to conflate the actions of a terrorist organization with the broader population. Our town's display of solidarity with Israel is not an endorsement of harm to innocent civilians, but a statement against terrorism. At this sensitive time, when emotions are running high and our community is directly impacted by the events of October 7th, let us strive for understanding, empathy, and unity. We can engage in open and respectful dialogue, fostering an environment where different perspectives are heard and valued. What I urge this town board is to consider the potential consequences of altering our display of solidarity and not allow the Israeli, Israeli flag to be removed and/or the Palestinian flag to be raised. Thank you.
Next.
Hi, my name is Marina Schlanger. I'm a resident of Newcastle. I live at 30 Old Waring Brook Road, Mount Kisco. I didn't even know this meeting was happening tonight. I just heard about it on my way home. And I just needed to come and listen, and I just need to respond to something I heard. I'm just gonna be very quick and very simple. This is not about diversity. This is not about inclusion. This is not about sides. There are no sides. There's only one side, and it's called being a human. That's it. It's that simple. If it was any other country's flag flying, this would not be an issue. It's because it's the flag of Israel. If you're a human being, you stand against terrorism. Period. The end. Thank you. Period. The end. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak? Hang on, Warren, one second. Go ahead.
I'm Ethan Wechel and I am, I live at 35 Garden Ridge Road and I'm a resident of Newcastle. And I would like to say that as a, as someone who's a Jewish and a student at Greeley High School, and there were things that were happening at the high school, like a swastika being drawn in the bathroom and a organization called Westpac that is, supports Palestine and is anti-Israel, being allowed to recruit people at the community expo. This, this council has an opportunity to, a very powerful decision that if they fly the Israeli flag, it allows everyone who's Jewish in this community to feel so much safer and have that, their, have that knowledge that their community is behind them and that they know that they can feel safe in this community and that they will be protected. And that's important. Thank you.
My name is Warren Gottlieb. I'm at A Plymouth Road in Chappaqua, and I'm an 18-year resident. I really didn't plan to say anything here tonight, but after hearing some of the things said, I just wanted to chime in on a few things. First of all, I think our town board has done an outstanding job since October 7th on this issue. And I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart as a member of this community and as a member of the Jewish community. I will never forget it. With respect to concerns that have been raised here tonight about being scared, about being fearful, I just want to ask you to direct yourself to our FBI Director Ray, who recently testified after October 7th that antisemitism in the United States has reached historic levels since October 7th. And he also pointed out that American Jews make up 2.4% of the US population, but are targets of about 60% of the hate crimes that are tied to religion. I don't know how you describe some of the images that we have seen, that our children have seen, the burning of human beings. I don't know how you hear about babies being ripped out of their mother's stomachs and shown to their mothers as they were alive. And take an act that is meant to be in solidarity with those who suffered and those who are connected to Israel and the Jewish faith. I don't know how you take that and turn that into the spectacle that we were subjected to earlier tonight. That is not anything that I know in the definition of being a human being. I respect people from all walks of life. But the fact of the matter is the Jewish people have been persecuted throughout history and it goes back for thousands of years. And if our town board decided that they wanted to stand up and show their solidarity with Israel after they experienced an event that was 15 times what we had faced on September 11th, I say to our town board, God bless all of you.
We're not going to have repeat speakers until at least everyone's spoken, if at all.
I too. Catherine Wechel, 35 Garden Ridge. 19 years living in Newcastle. First time speaking here.
Oh, is that your son?
That's my son.
Just speak into the microphone so people online can hear you, please.
Okay. I didn't know about this meeting. I left a webinar at school to come here.
Again, just so you know, this was not on the agenda. This is just public comment.
Right, no, no, no. I just mean that I have nothing prepared.
No, no, I know.
And I wasn't expecting to speak, actually, even until I saw my son be brave and go up. And I think it's very scary to speak and give your address. And to people who have come here and not done that and are voicing their concerns, it is just as scary, if not more scary perhaps, for us who have been, the Jewish people who are, you know, aware of where things go and what things happen and just the, it's scary to come up and give your name and address. And I encourage people who are concerned about their safety to do that because I think it's more dangerous not to. That's all I have to say.
I'm Alan Nadel. I live 62 Random Farm Circle in Chappaqua, here. I wasn't planning on speaking about anything tonight, about the flag either way, but there is something that came up tonight that I do object to. And that's people coming from outside the community, agitators, speaking to this board. People who claim to be antisemitism through the name of Jews for Peace, which is, you know, take that as it is. People who, who they claim to, to represent in the community. This is a community forum. We're all here. Most of us live here. We're speaking, we're saying what we have in our minds. People from in this community who want to speak should speak. They shouldn't use proxies who, who, you know, may or may not know anybody who lives in Chappaqua. Okay? So I've, that, that offends me and that shouldn't happen. That's all I have to say.
Good evening. I'm Cliff Cohn, 72 Whopper Willy Lake Road. I am a Newcastle resident, by the way. I'd like to say in the first instance that people who are not residents of this town should not be permitted to speak without invitation from the town board. That is a massive mistake because our compassion to hear the voices of our residents, all of our residents, will be used against us by fascist, gaslighting organizations like JVP. We must all be vigilant against any voices, especially those with Orwellian agendas to sow division. If any resident wants to speak on any issue, they should do so and we should embrace them, even if we disagree with them vehemently. As residents and neighbors, we owe each other at least that much. Thank you.
My name is Julie Weiner. I live at One Shonard Terrace in Yonkers, New York.
I would ask if you could try to keep your remarks brief, just, sure, not a resident.
I joined Jewish Voice for Peace many years ago.
We want to be respectful, but as I, as I said before when Cecilia spoke, you are one organization. We would like to hear one voice.
I'm not, I'm speaking for myself. I'm, I have no.
You don't need to reference what organization you're.
Well, I'm speaking for myself.
Okay, okay, okay. We're going to let her finish speaking and.
Don't let her finish.
Go ahead.
That's interesting to hear your wish that I be silenced.
I just said we're going to let you finish.
You're taking up valuable time from the town so that we have a lot of residents here tonight.
I just want to say, as somebody who grew up in a home where every spring we celebrated Pesach with two important messages. One was, be kind to the stranger for you were strangers in the land of Egypt. And the ceremony, the dinner, always ended with the phrase, "Next year in Jerusalem." So identifying with the feelings of a people who experienced exile for thousands of years, I could never understand how so many Israelis, how so many American Jews could not understand the feelings of people who had lost their homes only decades ago or whose grandparents it was who had been expelled with the founding of the State of Israel. So to me, Jewish Voice for Peace was an organization that could contain somehow both of those conflicting narratives to understand both the desire to return to home and the desire of the Palestinians who were expelled and held outside and held in prison with walls built around them. So I only am here to ask you one question.
Are keeping anyone in prison.
They're now saying things that aren't true.
She has a question. She has a question.
So I have two concerns. One is that the definition of antisemitism has come to include people who make political criticisms of the policies of the state of Israel.
That's right. This town, last year, has adopted the IHRA definition of antisemitism and that is the definition that we described.
The IHRA definition of antisemitism includes, as an example, criticism of the State of Israel in the absence of criticism of some other repressive regime.
That definition was adopted by the Biden administration.
And it was adopted by the, by the, by the, by the town of Westchester, which I just, by the county of Westchester, which I disagree, yes. So my second question is, my second question is, it's been proposed, it's been suggested that in order to express solidarity with those members of your, your community and the community that are Palestinian or that have relatives in occupied Gaza or in the occupied West Bank. Closed off Gaza, imprisoned Gaza, whatever you'd like to call it. There are now 11,000 corpses under, buried under the rubble in Gaza. There are now 4,000 children who have died in Gaza or more.
Are you worried about the hostages too?
Yes. I'm worried about, I'm worried about.
All the hostages, including the thousands. Let her finish speaking so she can sit down, please.
There are thousands of children. There are thousands of children who are, who have been held over the last several years and many, many are still being held in Israeli prisons. Those are also hostages.
So what is your ask? What is your new business for this board?
My new business for the board is to find out whether you have asked the question as well, based on the request that is made of you, to fly the Palestinian flag in addition to the Israeli flag to express your solidarity with the people in this community whose relatives now are under bombardment.
Okay.
And whether, I'm, to find out whether you have investigated the legality of that as well.
Thank you. I, I am, as a supervisor, elected supervisor of this town, I am making a, an executive decision that we will not hear from anyone from the Jewish Voices for Peace anymore. You happen to be a town resident. If there, if you are not a town resident, we will not be hearing from you.
We have a resident that wants to speak here.
Good evening. My name is Matthew Exel. I am a town resident. I live at 35 Garden Ridge in Chappaqua. The people who are not from Newcastle planned to be here this evening. I'm from Newcastle. I planned that being at hockey practice, we're not going there. I suspect that the vast majority of the folks that are from Newcastle weren't planning on being here today. They're just, I want you to know, our town really thanks you guys for raising the Israeli flag. It means a lot to us. It means enough. It means enough that we will fill this room on a moment's notice and cancel our plans. So, thank you.
Does anyone else like to speak?
Oh, Frank, then.
Hi, Frank Shiner. I'm 35 Apple Hill Lane in Chappaqua. I am a resident. I'm not a constituent, to be totally transparent because I'm in the Chappaqua School District, not in town of, no, listen.
County.
Okay. But my taxes would reflect that. I wasn't going to say anything. I was going to say, be here for moral support. But I heard some things come out. First of all, I think Jen started on a good tone with saying that now's the time to come together. I'm a, I'm a peaceful person. I try to get along with everybody. I happen to be of 100% Lebanese descent. I'm Catholic. I was proud to see my church today march in, in support of Israel. 5,000 Catholics in midtown Manhattan. Growing up, I was taught that the Jewish people were our elder brothers and sisters in our faith. I believe that firmly. I was taught that Jesus was in the area of Israel, in Jerusalem, 2,000 years ago. I know that the Jews were in Israel 1,000 years at least before that. I hear things like occupiers. Jesus would be very surprised to hear that the Jewish people were occupiers in that area. I can tell you that Hezbollah in Lebanon is a blight on Lebanon. I'm embarrassed. The second-in-command in the government of Lebanon has to be a member of Hezbollah. If Israel, and, and they should, if Israel were to go and take out Hezbollah, it would break my heart to know that there were civilian casualties in Lebanon. I still have family there. I have people that own property there. It would be terrible. I would mourn for them. I mourn for the Palestinian innocent people who are, who are gone now. And the answer is to take out Hamas. Hamas is the problem. Hezbollah is the problem, not Israel. Let's remind ourselves that we were under a, they were under a ceasefire on October 6th. Who broke that ceasefire? Hamas broke that ceasefire. So nobody, nobody wants to see civilian casualties. There isn't a person here that wants to see that. We were at the vigil for, for Israel We were at the vigil for Israel, and everybody made perfectly clear that nobody wants to see civilian casualties. Civilians were warned to leave. Hamas wouldn't let them leave because they hide behind them. So I want to know that, I want you to know that I stand firmly with my Jewish friends and neighbors. As a Lebanese, coming from an Arabic-speaking family in a Lebanese bakery, in a Lebanese Catholic church, with Persian customers, Orthodox customers, Muslim customers, Syrian Orthodox, Lebanese Maronite, all coming together and getting along in this wonderful country. That's what makes us great. That people can leave the petty differences in other countries, and the best of the best of every country came here and formed this country, and we can get along. Why don't we capitalize on that now? Why don't we support each other and just come to an understanding that nobody wants to see civilian casualties? But war is war, and Hamas declared war on Israel. And Israel has a right to defend herself. It's that simple. So let's mourn the civilian casualties, the civilian losses, and let's call it what it is. There are people in the world who demonstrated that, that they want nothing more than death to Israel. They want nothing more than the death of all Jewish people. And when you start with that, there is no negotiation. End of story.
Hi, I'm Chris Hildenbrand, 25-year resident. I live at 120 Prospect Drive. I thought it was tough to follow Frank as a singer, but, you know. There's not much that I can add beyond humanity that Jennifer and Frank demonstrated tonight. But I just felt compelled to comment in light of the just almost breathtaking audacity of some of the comments we heard from these outside groups. What happened on October 7th wasn't a terrorist attack. It was an invasion. And we know who was behind it. We know that there were over 1,000 Hamas fighters. We know that they were backed by Iran. If Iran had sent rockets and missiles and Revolutionary Guard troops into Israel, there would be no hesitation about flying the Israeli flag. The whole concept of equivalency and concern over Palestinian innocent civilians is misplaced. Obviously, there's not a person in this room who doesn't share that concern. We wouldn't be human beings if we didn't. But to me, it is soulless and almost the height of moral outrage to make this about that. The blood hadn't dried on October 7th when we heard people in Australia saying, "Gas the Jews." When we saw crowds amassing in European capitals. We saw the equivalent almost of modern-day pogroms in our schools, on our campuses. And so, as Frank pointed out, we obviously will mourn for any innocent civilians. But this is not about that. This is about an invasion, an invasion that had one goal, which was to exterminate Jewish people. And what we saw, as Warren pointed out, was pre-civilizational behavior. We saw videos of terrorist fighters telling their parents how proud they were to have killed Jews with their hands. We heard parents exalting in that. So this is not an abstraction. This is real. And there are 16 million Jews in the world. And right now, they are in more peril than they've been since the Holocaust. That's real. And so, when this town board decides to fly the Israeli flag in solidarity, not just with the Jewish people, but with a democratic country in a sea of tyrannical, authoritarian, theocratic Nazi regimes, to me, that is a strong statement, and I couldn't support it more. And the idea that we would dilute that by flying a Palestinian flag is misplaced. We can have sympathy and cry and mourn for innocent civilians lost, as we would in every war, as we do the innocent Russians who are dying every single day, as we do the innocent Russians and Ukrainians who are dying every single day. But there was no hesitation when we flew the Ukraine flag, as there shouldn't have been. And we don't question Ukraine's motives. We don't question its prosecution of the war, other than, you know, within reason. And we know why we did that, because it's right and wrong. And what happened on October 7th was an invasion, and it's right to fly the flag. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Debbie Greshman. I live at 10 Cowden Lane here in Chapakua. I wasn't planning on speaking, but like many others, after hearing the comments in this town that I love so much, put a few things on my phone, so bear with me. I don't like to read off of it, but I know we don't need to say it, but everyone in this room aches for any life lost, and it's not what I think we need to talk about tonight. The fact that anyone is questioning flying the flag, which I think we are so proudly doing, I wanted to address. We fly the flag of Israel because it is a shining example of democracy and tolerance in an area right now that is filled with hate. It's the only foreign country that contains a 9/11 memorial that bears the name of every American killed that day. They are our ally, and they've been invaded, as Chris said, and they've been attacked, as have our people. They are on our side in a war against extreme Islam that's seeking to destroy the West. They're chanting "Death to Israel" and "Death to America," and any American in this room has to know that. We're flying a flag in solidarity to show them that they have, we stand with them in the same way that they've stood with us. For those who've come here who aren't part of our community and wasted our time, if you're advocating to fly a Palestinian flag, then you're siding with terror. It's a fact that the government of Palestine is now being run by Hamas, which is advocating for the extermination of Jews and the extermination of America. If you advocate this point, you're siding with an ideology that advocates for extermination of anyone, LGBTQ, other groups that we have all fought to protect freedom. As Chris said, we come here, Frank said, we come here to all live in freedom. So if you're here to tell us about a struggle of the Palestinians in that country, it's a false narrative. No one hates Palestinians in this town. We are a loving, peaceful town. Nobody wants anyone hurt. But it sounds like from those words, for anyone who has questioned with flying the Israeli flag, that maybe your actions are telling me that you hate Jews and you hate Israel, and that is extremely hurtful. And you talk about being scared to live in this town. That's a pretty scary place to feel. So I thank you for the board for hearing us, and I thank you for flying the flag of our ally who stands for peace and democracy and standing up against Hamas and terrorism. So thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak?
Jeff Ziegler, 651 King Street. Been a resident here for six years. It's not my first town board meeting. I look around, I see some faces that are familiar. I think the last time it was filled this much was the 50 North Greeley hearings. I've been to Gaza. I've been to the West Bank. I've also grew up being the second Orthodox Jew to go to a non-denominational school in Baltimore, Maryland. My brother was the first. You mentioned Pesach. I went away Pesach. I came back, and there was a derogatory name for Jewish people etched into my lacrosse stick. Flight. One person stood up. His name was Nicholas Zakowski. Tomorrow is his 19th anniversary of his death, where he was killed in Fallujah protecting all of our freedom. Tomorrow, it's ironic. He was the one person that stood up for me. Way that I responded, I wore my yarmulke every day. Said, "You want to call me that? That's great." What did Nick do? He happened to be somewhere, walked by, they had a yarmulke with a Nike swoosh on it. He thought it was cool. He showed up to lacrosse practice wearing a yarmulke. He was going to be with me. So I heard New Rochelle, I heard Yonkers, I didn't hear Newcastle, didn't hear Millwood, didn't hear Chapakua. You say you were Jewish, you talked about Pesach. So I'm going to give you an offer. I'm going to give everyone an offer right now. There is a 1 o'clock flight out of JFK to Israel, where you can fly, I'll pay for your ticket. In fact, I'll get you an Uber from here to JFK. And my family will meet you at the airport and take you to Gaza, where one of my friends right now is fighting not for Israel, not for Palestine, but for democracy. Because people like you, on October 6th, would have been raped, would have been beheaded, would have been dragged through the streets because they don't care. The Palestinian people care. Played basketball against them. After junior year, went to Israel for the entire summer. Basketball for peace. We went, that's when I went to the West Bank. That's when I went to Gaza. Palestinian people are really nice people. Hamas, Hezbollah, Fatah, ISIS, Al Qaeda, you name them. They're all in the same boat. The ironic thing is, I've been to many town board meetings. You had the Ukraine flag hanging out. I didn't see you there. What, are the Ukrainian people less valuable than the Palestinians? Are they less valuable than the Israelis? I saw members of our community standing outside, right by the sawmill. Black Lives Matter, Save Button Hook, Pride. Where is everybody for people that are now being murdered and raped and the 240 people that are right now underneath hospital? You don't have to take to Israel's word. The US said it. England said it. People that could care less say, "This is wrong." And for you to come to our town and argue about this, it's chutzpah. The offer stands. Right now, I will pay for your Uber and your flight to Israel if you want to go. And you can go see what it's like to have rockets fly over your head, to be worried that someone is going to come through your front door with an AK-57 to shoot you, or maybe they'll be less humane and watch, make you watch them rape your son, your daughter, your kids, your mother, your grandmother. Shame on you, and I hope that I never see any of you in our town again.
We are not, I said, we are not going to, no, I'm sorry, ma'am. Ma'am, we are not letting people speak twice. Ma'am, we are not letting people speak twice.
Get out of here. Get out of here.
Would anybody else like to speak who has not yet spoken? Would anyone else like to speak?
Cheers on all of the ovens, I bet, if you were around in 1938.
Oh, you're so, you're all such victims.
All right, all right.
I'm not going to change anybody's. My name is Brian Jbloner. I live at 63 Maple Avenue. And I'm a resident of Newcastle. I'm not going to change anybody's mind tonight. But again, I would like to address you. You say you speak for the Jewish people. I'm the son of a father who, family had escaped the pogroms. My mother escaped Kristinoff. They came here just to be Americans. I'm a retired New York City police officer who was on round zero on 9/11. So you can tell me all about your experience. My son.
Can you speak into the microphone?
I'm sorry, my son, I'm sorry, my son, who is a graduate of Greeley in the Military Academy at West Point, will probably be deployed because of the events in the world now. So he's a Jewish kid who's now going to serve his country, and you're telling us, and you're telling the Jewish people how we have to, what we have experienced. I just want to say to the board, thank you very much for your solidarity with Israel and flying the flag.
Just for those of you online, I know you may be waiting to speak. We're taking everyone here in person first, and then we will grab you online because you get to be in your pajamas. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak?
Hi. My name is Cynthia Seamus. I am a Newcastle resident. I've lived here for 19 years, and I live at 765 King Street in Chapakua. Issues related to diversity, equity, and inclusion are very close to my heart. I was a founding member of the original Council on Racial Equity in 2020 and have remained a vocal supporter for all efforts toward DEI and belonging in our community and beyond. I'm also Jewish. I'm Jewish by birth on my mother's side, and also by choice later in life, after having been raised in another religious tradition. My husband is Jewish. My children are Jewish. The flag of Israel was raised in front of town hall shortly after the terrorist attacks on Israel's citizens by Hamas on October 7th. The stated intention was one of solidarity with the innocent civilians who were killed so brutally by these attackers, and for the hostages whom neither Israel nor her allies have thus far been able to free or cause to be freed. It's hard to adequately express the fear and anger that we as Jews are feeling right now, although a lot of you are doing a pretty good job, as we face threats from an organization which has written in its very charter that they have an intention to wipe us, not just a country or a territory, but entire people off the face of the earth. So I stand here in solidarity in that way. I am with you, and I am you. However, with two quite notable exceptions, we here in Newcastle can simply never hope to solve the problems of peace in the Middle East. But what you and I can do is work on making peace here in our little town today. We can make this town more accepting of others who have different lives, different prayers, different traditions, different histories, and yes, some different truths than our own. We can make Newcastle more equitable, more inclusive. We could make it a safe place for everybody. I believe that begins with hearing. Not just the physical act of hearing where sound waves hit your eardrums, but actually listening and trying to empathize. Right now, what we are hearing is that community members here in this town are afraid to stand up publicly. But they are telling us, in the ways that they feel safe doing so, that flying the flag of a nation that is at war in front of our municipal building sends a message of fear to them. And what we're also hearing is that when any number of residents, whether it's 30, or 10, or 100, or 1,000, tell us that they are being made uncomfortable by something that our governing body is doing, then I feel like it only seems right to listen to them and to hear them and respect them. They're your constituents. They are. They're taxpayers. They're our neighbors. And most importantly, they're people. We can all stand for what we believe in as individuals, while also trying to do what's right for the world. And since so many of us in this room and on the town board are Jewish, I'd also like to call on all of us to remember the spirit of Tikun Olam, which is the healing of our world. We bear responsibility, not only for our own moral and spiritual and material welfare, but for the welfare of the world at large. A very simple gesture in this case could begin this process of healing through hearing. If we must raise any flag other than the United States of America, let us raise some flag that represents peace right here in our town, or unity with our citizens, or solidarity against the terrorists of Hamas who hold both innocent Israelis and innocent Palestinians under their fist. Let us come together to heal this little corner of our broken world. Thank you.
Is there anyone else here who would like to speak? All right, is there anyone online who has their hand raised? Victoria?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, if you can just, we see your name, but if you can state your name and address and whether you're a Newcastle resident.
Yes, of course. I'm Victoria Alzepidi. I'm a Newcastle resident. I live at 65 Seven Bridges Road, and I've lived in Newcastle for about 15 years. I guess I want to say something personal, and then I want to say something just about, you know, bringing this to the town level. I grew up in Brooklyn. I'm of Jewish and Italian descent. And as a Jew, I grew up my whole life, and I don't want to get emotional really, but living in fear of the Holocaust coming again. And literally planning parts of my life where I've lived, who I'm aligned with, knowing where I'm safe, based on being Jewish. I've driven to the south, I've driven across the country by myself. Very aware that I could be targeted in certain antisemitic settings. So I'm extremely sensitive, as a lot of us are, to what's going on right now and feeling terrified and feeling sad and worried and a lot of issues around what we're all going to do as a society, as a world, around how much antisemitism we're seeing and how to counter that and how to continue educating people and how to continue being a strong voice against antisemitism. And at the same time, tonight, and I wasn't planning to come to this meeting either. I'm sorry I'm not in the room with all of you. You know, I do think that we need to think about especially how children in our community feel right now. And I was very impressed and grateful for the young man who stood up from Greeley to talk about some antisemitic situations happening at the school and how important it is for young people to feel supported. And I really, you know, when the folks early- And I really, you know, when the folks earlier from the organization who don't live here, I, I heard a few things that they said that, that I've also heard from people in our town. And I, I think there are some folks of Muslim and Arabic backgrounds who actually don't feel safe right now. And I do think whatever we can do, at the same way to make our Jewish children feel safe, to do whatever signaling we can do for those kids of Muslim descent, of, you know, background, to also feel that our community supports them, that we're all safe here. And, you know, this, being in this room and this meeting tonight, as a Jew, I've been many times in my life a minority. And spoken out, even though I was not in the majority, and felt scared. And tonight, I feel like, I, I try to imagine myself as maybe like a seventh grade young person in this meeting who's from a Muslim background. And how would he or she feel in this room right now? And I guess, you know, whatever is decided about the flag, I just hope that as a community, we can support young people and residents, both from Jewish backgrounds and also from Muslim backgrounds who have fear right now for different reasons. But we can empathize with each other because we do have fear in different ways. And I, I want us to be, I want our town board to be, I want us as residents to, to have that compassion and to be there as a unified community of support and kindness. So thank you.
Thanks, Victoria. Is there anyone else online who would like to speak? Melissa?
My name is Melissa Zenavoy. I'm at 34 Joan Drive in Chapua. I'm on a bus home from DC right now from marching. And I just wanna thank everyone in the room, but also to let the board know that we're probably, you know, there were at least four buses and probably many individuals who took their day and left early today or potentially earlier than that to express their solidarity with Israel. And we thank everyone in the room and want to be counted, even though we are not able to be counted. You miss really a very powerful and important day for the Jewish people.
Thank you. All right, Geetha Nathan?
Yeah, hi. My name is Geetha and people can look at my last name and think something else. But I, I'm, I've been, I live in-
Wait, we need you to state your name, your address, and whether you're a Newcastle resident?
I am a Newcastle resident. My name is Geetha Nathan. I live in 313 North Greeley Avenue.
Thank you.
And I have been a resident here since 2006. This is my first time ever, even being part of the town board. I did, I was part of the Raise and Equity Committee in 2020. But I didn't continue because I didn't feel supported. And I have never felt part of this community ever. And I know what it is like to feel, be a minority in a community. And my questions are very basic. Maybe this was discussed before. One, how does a town decide to have an international, another country's flag? So I'm just asking the question, I'm not commenting on it. How does it decide? And if this were to happen in an Asian or an African-
I'll, I'll call you back. Hang on, Jennifer, you need to mute yourself. Sorry, Geetha, we can't. Can you repeat that? Your last sentence?
Yes, I just had some couple of questions. One is, how does the town decide? What is the process involved in deciding before having another country's flag outside a county building or a town building? And if this were to happen in any other part of the world, is the process the same? And also it is like, I'm not taking any sides here. It is just that this whole issue has caused a lot of hatred in this community. This has gone into Facebook and everywhere. I know Facebook is not part of the town, but there is so much of hatred in Facebook. If someone doesn't, has a voice about the flag, they are termed antisemitic. Does that mean anyone who wants the flag should be called them as anti, as Islamophobic? That's wrong. Either way, it is wrong. So I think we, as someone said, we need to come together as a community and try to figure this out for this community. We are not going to solve the world problems here. But this community, we have to live with each other. We have to live next to each other. Our kids go to school together. So I think that should be a main focus for us as a community. The town board is elected by the community. So you represent everyone. So I think that is all I'm, I just, that's my only wish here. I'm not taking any sides, but I feel that there's so much of hatred in this community now. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, unfortunately with social media, I think people hide behind keyboards sometimes and, and they're not as, as nice or respectful as they would be if they were sitting across the table from somebody. So that's unfortunately a problem with social media. In terms of, of raising a flag, the town board was elected to make policy decisions. And we decide from a policy perspective whether, you know, what we wanna support, what we wanna do for all areas of the law and governing our town. We don't accept requests as to raising flags. That's just not something we do. And anything that we do on that flag pole is a government decision and it's a legislative decision. It's not, it's not a town decision. We certainly can't if somebody-
Resident decision.
Yeah, it's not a resident decision. All right, thank you. Jennifer Scarlett?
Yes, thank you. Jennifer Scarlett, I am not a resident. I am a resident of Riverdale in the Bronx, 2501 Paddle State Avenue.
Are you a member of Jewish Voices for Peace?
I'm a member of J E K National.
Yes, we're not letting anybody, we're not letting anyone else from that organization speak. Thank you very much. Can you please mute her? Okay, Jessica Plotnik? Jessica?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So I am also on the bus heading back from Washington DC.
Jessica, 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 sorry. We need your address and whether you're a Newcastle resident. We need it for the minutes.
Sure, sure, sure. 9 Fifth Port, Pleasantville. I'm a resident of, I think, North Castle or Newcastle. My kids go to Chapua.
Okay, you're now pleasant.
I'm a Chapua resident and play Chapua taxes. So I just wanna say that I feel like what the town is doing is standing behind what the United States government is doing. And if anybody watched it, and you can certainly see what the United States government got up and spoke and has spoken, that they stand unequivocally behind Israel. They are there to protect Israel. They believe in the state of Israel, that Israel's right to defend itself. And the town of Newcastle standing up with Israel to support Jews at this horrific time in history is the right thing to do. You're standing up for Jews. You are standing with the United States of America and all its citizens, Jewish and non-Jewish, who absolutely stand against terrorism. And you are doing the right thing. That flag is being raised to protect everyone in this country for their rights and to not be scared and to feel protected. Thank you.
We're gonna come back to the room. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Please state your name and address and whether you're a Newcastle resident?
Hi, Roger Klepper. 18 Pond Hill Road. And yes, I am a Newcastle resident. You know, be relatively brief. I feel compelled to, to address some, some of the comments, the recent ones. You know, I can, I can understand how someone not Jewish in this community, someone of Muslim descent or, or other, you know, other descent could feel, could feel overwhelmed by, by all of this and all of what is happening here. And possibly scared or, or concerned, you know, with, with, with what they are seeing. But, but to be, to be clear, I mean, in my mind, you can correct me if I'm wrong, the reason the flag is raised is because there was a terrorist attack on October 7th. It was the largest terrorist attack that I'm aware of since, since 9/11. And proportionally, you know, you can do all sorts of math, larger. The fact of the matter is, the reason why, you know, the fact of the matter is, we have a very large Jewish population in this community. And of course, we would raise a flag in that, in that, in that, in that circumstance. It is, it is what we do. This is a country that is an ally of the United States. It represents our ideals. If you take the Jewish out of the equation, if it was any other ally of the United States, without unequivocally, we would, that was a victim of a terrorist attack of this nature, yes, we would do the same thing. It's no different than the sentiments that we had towards Ukraine, you know, at that time. So yes, there are circumstances that may feel, you know, that, that may make it difficult. But I'm sorry, when one side does something and you, for whatever reason, feel some kinship with that side, circumstances will dictate that there will, there will be certain feelings that come with that. And that just comes with the territory of these types of very, very difficult situations. But without a doubt, our town is doing the right thing in this situation. Thank you.
Did anyone else wanna speak?
Everyone has been so-
Nope, nope, come on up. We need your name, the whole thing. We need their people from home, like it needs to be recorded.
Okay, Dory Cook. I live in Millwood, New York. Everyone spoke so eloquently and, except for the outsiders, of course. And I do have empathy, of course. Everyone has said that to both sides, the loss of life is tragic. What I most care about right now is Israel and the hostages. And many towns in Westchester have more than a flag flying over their town hall. They're putting blue ribbons out. They're putting the posters up. I would like to see if that's something we can do as a community, to come together and to have some blue ribbons until the hostages come home. Thank you.
So add an initial comment is, residents, you are more than welcome to put blue ribbons on your trees if you would so like to. Is there anyone else here before we get? Okay. Robert Fleischer. Sorry, Rob F. Please state your name and address and whether you're a Newcastle resident?
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Robert Fleischer. Idiot kill rape. I am a Newcastle resident. I just wanted to make two points. One, I wanted to thank the town board-
Wait, Rob, hang on, hang on one second. Can we make the people speaking online a little louder? For my technical people in the back?
We hear them well back here.
I'm just getting old, I guess.
No, it's faint, it's faint up here.
All right. Thank you. Rob, talk again.
Is this better?
Yes, much better. Thank you.
Okay. I just wanted to say two things. One, I wanted to thank the town board for their grace and their, and their actions since October 7th and providing much needed leadership and sympathy and empathy. Because I think, I read the notes that you put out and I, I don't think they've been so incited. And I wanted to thank you and acknowledge all five of you as, as part of that effort. And the second, the second thing I wanted to say, even since I think some people are listening on the bus, is I really wanted to also thank all those people from our town who went down to DC today and were selfless at their time and went down there and showed solidarity. And my hat's off to you, with all my respects. And thank you so much for going out, going down there representing Newcastle as part of that effort. So thank you so much. And that's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Rob. Is there anyone else online who would like to speak? We're not having repeat speakers. Farqanda?
Hi, Farqanda Rizdismen here. I live at 23 Lawrence Farms Crossway. And my heart is very heavy listening to some of the people speaking. On October 7th was a terrible attack on the Israeli people. What has happened after that, history will judge us on how we process the events that are unfolding, how we value one life over another. If we were in the 1960s, currently, and watched the civil rights movement and saw the disobedience, the, the job losses, doxing trucks going around schools if you speak out against Israel, which is a nation, not a religion. It is a nation, and if you don't agree with its politics or you don't agree with America's politics and you don't agree with America sending billions of dollars year after year to Israel, you should have a right to express that in this town, in this country, in this state, without being labeled antisemitic. I have Jewish people in my family. I am Muslim. My husband is Irish Catholic. My brother-in-law is Jewish. There is a way to disagree with someone or to have a different opinion without being labeled as if you hate their existence. There needs to be a place to have discourse, a place to discuss the events that are unfolding before our eyes. 11,000 dead is a real number. As much as the 1,400, I'm sorry, 1,200 that passed away, that were killed in a terrorist attack on October 7th. But there are many events that have happened after that. If there are posters of kidnapped individuals, my heart breaks for it. Can there be posters of all the dead children? Is that allowed in our town if I am a resident? Can I put up ribbons to commemorate or to acknowledge the deaths that are occurring as we speak? In hospitals, that children are lying under rubble, dismembered bodies? There were people that mentioned beheadings and rapes, but some of that was contradicted. Some of that didn't happen. When is the proof to speak about this?
No, we're gonna, we're gonna listen. And again-
Oh, is that, oh, does everyone in the audience understand that? That you are-
Yes, we do. Yes, we do.
Are you yelling at me while I'm speaking? And laughing now? This is the community-
You're also on, on a screen, so it's, it's, no one knows if they can hear you. If you can hear-
I'm so sorry. Are they laughing at me because I'm on the screen?
No, nobody's laughing at you. Nobody's laughing at you.
Who's opening their heart up is now laughing at what I'm sharing as a resident?
We're treating all our residents with respect.
Right. So you're reminding your group there that there should be respect for every opinion shared as a resident?
Yes, I said that and I said that at the beginning.
Like an outsider in my own town. Because if I don't share the views, if I don't agree with the Israeli flag flying, doesn't make me antisemitic. Who's gonna be, need to be leaving?
I'm sorry, not you. There's something going on here.
Oh, that's so strange. When other people were speaking, there was no, oh, I'm sorry. I, I don't understand.
We're listening to you speak.
Oh, I just heard other people talking over me. I heard people laughing. I heard people snickering while I was speaking. There was no snickering going on at all and no laughter when anyone else spoke. I hope that you can feel and see what it feels like to not be the majority, to be the minority. Many people share very eloquently what they felt like to be an outsider. In this town, you are not the outsider. In this town, others are the outsiders. And will it be 30 years from now where my children will stand at a community board and talk about what it felt like to be in a town where your pain wasn't recognized? what it felt like to be in a town where your pain wasn't recognized, only one pain was recognized? Is that what history will tell us as the thousands and thousands die? My heart goes out to the 1,200 that were killed. How about the 11,000 that have been killed? Where does the pain lie for that?
Yeah, I think that we've said, I'm not sure if you've been on the whole time, but I think there's not one person who got up who did not say that they don't feel, I'm speaking in double negatives here. Everyone who got up said that they feel for every single person who's been killed in this conflict. Every innocent Israeli, every innocent Palestinian. That's not really the issue here. And every, every single person who has a shred of humanity in them feels for everyone who's been killed.
There are people that came on and said that this is what Israel needs to do. This is not shared by everyone in this town. Like, there were many people who stated their one line, innocent lives, and then went on to say, what is happening is a painful example of what is happening to Israelis and antisemitism that they are experiencing. It was not an equal distribution of the pain that is being inflicted today. In fact, it's actually quite scary, and I don't want my camera on, and I feel so uncomfortable giving my address, because I don't know if I'll be labeled antisemitic. I don't know if my children will be harassed at school. I don't know if my son will lose an opportunity to go to school, if he'll lose an internship. Because he shares an opinion that is different from the rest of the town and is, does not agree with America's policy or Israeli geopolitical strategy or policy and how they're reacting to being attacked. There is no room for discourse in this country as trucks drive around and blast the faces of anyone who disagrees. How will history judge us, is what I'm leaving this with. Having studied the Holocaust, having studied the 1960s in this country, how we allowed Black people to be treated, and we stood quietly and didn't do anything, how will history judge us in this chapter will be quite interesting. And I really appreciate the opportunity given to speak as a town member. And I am not alone. There are many people who feel what I feel, and we are scared to death. If we share anything other than toeing the line, if we put up a poster of children that have died, what will happen to us? What will happen to our children? What will happen to our job opportunities? That's the fear that we live in. Thank you so much for letting me speak.
All right, is there anyone else here who would like to speak? Who has not yet spoken. We're not, we're not having people speak again. All right, is there anyone online who would like to speak?
Victoria?
No, we're not having, we're not allowing repeat speakers today. Thank you, Victoria. Sorry.
No, I didn't ask to speak, so my
Oh, you're unmuted, so you might want to mute then. All right, is there any other public comment or new business before this board? Oh, go ahead. Okay, Jaclyn?
Hi, everyone. My name is Jaclyn Marinus. I'm a Newcastle resident in One North Place. I just wanted to thank from the bottom of my heart the town board for their unwavering support for Israel and the Jewish people in this town, who are feeling extraordinary pain and sadness at this time. We are so grateful for your unwavering support. It's really saddening to hear some of the remarks I've heard tonight. We all are very saddened by any innocent death. I don't think there's anyone in that room or in this community that feels differently. But that's not what this is about. Antisemitism in this country is up 400%. We are fearful. There is actual violence occurring every day against our people. And we are really grateful for the support in this town. So again, thank you.
All right, is there any other public comment or new business?
Something else that came out of this.
No, we don't, we can't let anyone else speak again.
FOIA request. If they were to email him, people that are scared, that's not public rights. So if someone in the resident is scared about anything, they could email the town attorney.
Oh, if a resident is
That's what I'm saying, like
Yes, if a resident is scared about anything, email me as the town supervisor. And certainly
Cheaper to go that way.
He gets paid the big bucks.
Ain't part of it.
But certainly, and I've said this many, many, many times before, that hate has no home in Newcastle. I don't care what race you are. I don't care what religion you are. I don't care what sexual orientation you are. Hate has no home in this town, and everyone in this town should feel respected, and nobody should feel unsafe. And I will say that again and again. I've said it many, many times. And I think, I know that everyone on this town board feels exactly the same way. So if there is a problem, I definitely want people to come contact me.
Just to remind the public that we have, I'm just trying to go on our police department page. We've got, basically, it's like a civilian representative. So if you feel unsafe, if you feel that there's an issue, you can reach out on the police website. There is an anonymous form. There are advocates that will take
And it's not members of the police department, it's residents who have volunteered.
They are, they are citizen members of town who have volunteered their time. They're advocates. They will take and approach the police and explain what your issue is. You can remain anonymous. We instituted this two or three years ago. Residents haven't taken advantage of it, but it's there. And so, please, we have, we have set up these offices and these individuals that are there to help you. So if you feel unsafe, please reach out to them. Okay? It's on the police department.
Thank you.
Lisa, I have a question about that.
Yes.
I've never heard about this before.
It was actually, it was, years was actually part of the initial committee started as part of police reforms. It was years ago.
So it's been in existence for three, three years already?
Yes.
Yes, Hermine Charles, yes.
Yes. Yes. All right, well, you are all welcome to come stay and watch the rest of the meeting. All right, thank you. Public comment, there was nothing We have resolutions, but they're not All right, well, why don't we continue in our meeting? I think now we just, Jill? Jill? Is there anything else before we go to our resolutions? All right, so town board, we're going to go right to our resolutions.
We're going to go right to our resolutions.
There is a correction on resolution number two. There is a correction on resolution number two.
We're going to just bide our time for two minutes till it gets a little quieter. Nobody can hear us, right?
State law is different. That's what I'm trying to understand. Okay.
All right, if you're not here for the town board meeting anymore, if we could ask you to take the conversations outside. Excuse me? If we're not, we need to, we need to continue the meeting, so feel free to stay, but take your conversations outside. All right, are we ready? Okay, so we're going to move to our resolutions. Holly, do you want to start?
Yeah, sure.
Can you hear us? Can you hear us now?
Okay.
Yes, okay, thank you.
I move to authorize the hiring of Stephen
Just talk louder.
Stephen Donovan to the position of fourth grade police officer within the Newcastle Police Department, the annual salary of $77,764.76 effective December 4th, 2023, or the date Westchester County approves the resignation slash reinstatement.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to set a public hearing on a local law amending Chapter 65 regarding filming for Tuesday, October 24th, 2023.
I'm sorry, that's the one that has a correction. It's going to be November 28th.
Oh, yeah, thank you. November 28th. Regarding filming for Tuesday, November 28th, at the Town of Newcastle Town Hall at 7:30 or as soon thereafter is reached on the town board agenda that evening.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. I move to submit a home rule legislation request to restore the tax exemption status of the Ethical Society of Northern Westchester for the year 2024.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Yeah. I move to authorize the, to accept the outstanding balances for the Upper Westchester Muslim Society. I move to approve the authorization to accept $5,000 in full satisfaction of the outstanding balances of the following two escrow, of the two escrow accounts listed below of the Upper Westchester Muslim Society.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I move to authorize the purchase of swings from Game Time for the total amount of $5,867.73 utilizing Omnia Contract 2017001134, as well as authorize the installation of said swings by Row Contracting LLC for the total amount of $1,250, which includes materials and labor to be installed at Millwood Park.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Are there any other resolutions before the board?
Christina, anything else?
Anything else?
No.
All right, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you, everyone.